Good evening, everyone. It's time to call to order this June 19th, 2018 meeting of the Gallatin City Council. And we're going to begin the meeting like we do at each of our meetings with the invocation of the Pledge of Allegiance. This evening Vice Mayor Overton is going to offer our prayer, and then our Pledge of Allegiance is going to be led by Councilman Alexander. You can stand with me, please.
Please let us pray. Dear my Father, thank you for the opportunity and the freedom we have to come together to make the decision for this city. And Lord, we just ask you to give us the wisdom and knowledge to make those decisions. And Lord, bless this city, bless the department heads and the job that they do, and watch over them in this kind of extreme weather that we have. In your name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the republic, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Kettrell will have the roll call now, please.
Vice Mayor Overton.
Present.
Mr. Alexander.
Present.
Mr. Camp.
Present.
Mr. Fennell.
Here.
Mr. Hayes.
Present.
Ms. Love.
Here.
Mr. Mayberry is absent, but Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Before you have the May 1st, 2018 minutes of the Gallatin City Council meeting.
Motion approved.
Have a motion by Vice Mayor Overton, a second by Councilman Alexander. Are there any additions or corrections desired by any member of this council?
On page four, Mayor, there is just an error under public recognition on non-agenda-related items. There's a six instead of a space.
With that correction, all in favor of approving, please say aye. Opposed, they do pass unanimously. We now move on to public recognition on agenda-related items. We will have public recognition on non-agenda-related items at the end of the meeting, but right now is your opportunity to speak to anything that is on the agenda for this evening's meeting. We ask that you come forward, introduce yourself, give us your address, and then speak to the issue of your concern. Please limit your comments to five minutes. At this time, public recognition on agenda-related items is open.
My name is Joe DeBoer and I live at 10007 Hart Street, Gallatin, Tennessee. I rise to speak on behalf of item number three, which has to do with the stormwater I am for the stormwater utility, but I am not for the way you want to handle the money. I think that anybody that ties that utility to people's power bills and/or particularly the water bill is wrong. And I'll tell you why. We have a lot of people that come into our city and in the future is going to live in apartments. And these people do not have a chance to have the buildings and/or properties to satisfy the needs of stormwater. Now, if you have a piece of property that you own, in the case of my case, I own a house, I can change things on the property in order to make it better for stormwater. And I want to save the stormwater. This goes back to the good old days when you had cisterns at your home and you stored the water coming off your house. And you did that because you lived in areas like this that had a lot of limestone in it. And you had what they call hard water out of the ground. And you took the soft water that came off the building and/or used that to wash clothes with, back in the good old days. And that way you didn't have a bunch of runoff. Also, you save that water to water your yards or whatever else. I think that it should be tied to the real estate tax of the city. Because the simple fact is that you can make sure that you get your money. Last week, we had a, had Mr. Gator back there state that they lost X amount of dollars through the water and sewer because people are going to go off and leave the dang bill hanging if they're moving from place to place, which that happens when you're leasing property. We do not want to lose a dime. And therefore, you can go to the property owner if they don't pay and can end the property and sell it, just like you would if you were picking up taxes for real estate. That is the thing that we need to have. So, this is why I want to step to the plate on this and advise you not to do that. I understand Hendersonville went to the deal with tied it to the real estate taxes. And here's what I have to say about that. Anyone that serves on town council, city council, that owns property or has family that owns property and votes for it like it is right now is doing a disservice to the people that are trying to come to our city. Because the simple fact is they're not going to be involved with paying the bill. So, I thank you and have a great day.
Thank you, Mr. DeBoer. Is there anyone else wishing to speak under public recognition on agenda-related items? And if you're wishing to speak, I'd ask that you come on forward so that we're ready for the next speaker when one finishes.
My name's Linda Sutter. I live at 709 Coles Ferry Road. I'm here to talk about the Langley Hall property and the request to have that rezoned. We've been to more than one meeting. I'm sure my face must look at least a little familiar. We've talked about noise, drainage, the road, schools, the issue of putting families right next to a steel mill. I don't think anybody disputes all this information or argues with it. One person's property rights trumps and causes all these issues. One person's property rights or desire to have their property rights changed or altered means we change the community character map that has already been carefully discussed, reviewed, implemented. One person can override what the planning commission has already said was not a good idea. I just would like to point that out, that one person's property rights can affect all of us in that area. And to say that all those other issues, the noise, the drainage, the schools, the road, that's not just the city's problem, it becomes the county's problem. Well, that's us too. So, just pointing that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sutter. Anyone else wishing to speak this evening under public recognition?
My name's Brad Langford. I'm representing my parents, Jack and I'm a Langford. They live at 255 Old Douglas Lane. I also lived at 245 Old Douglas Lane until about 10 years ago. So, to say I know the area, grew up on it, my family's owned it since 1945. We entered into a contract with Goodall Contractors. It's been over a year now, and we have been more than pleased with the way Goodall has have worked with us, has communicated, has told us how these meetings would go. They have met with the people in the general area to kind of help give them an idea of what the total plan is. And they didn't enter into it without knowledge. They knew about the gas line, they knew about where water would go, they knew the street was, the width of the street. They knew all of these things, and we have been open and honest and communicated the whole time. We are delighted that they are going to name it Langford Farms. It honors my parents, it honors my family. My grandfather and grandmother were on that land, and it's so very special to us. We thank you for your consideration and the vote that you're going to do tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Langford. Anyone else wishing to speak this evening? I see no one indicating that they wish to speak, so I'll declare public recognition on agenda-related items closed, taking us down to Mayor's comments. I do want to remind everyone of just a few upcoming events. The first Third Thursday on Main will be this Thursday night, starts at 6:30, goes until about 9:00, and this week the Parks are playing. So, they're a local favorite. I'd encourage everyone to be there and enjoy the special event. The Saturday, the Classic Car Cruisin' happens again in the City Hall parking lot. That's from 4:00 until 8:00 p.m. Next Thursday, as I've mentioned before, each Thursday, the Square is trying to have some kind of special event. So, the following Thursday after Third Thursday on Main is going to be a Thursday on the Square event featuring an antique walk. So, that happens from 5:00 till 8:00 p.m. on that day. And I just wanted to remind everyone that on the 3rd of July, there is, we've decided to cancel that city council meeting. So, I just wanted to remind the council and the public of that. At this time, I'm going to ask the representatives from the Alzheimer's Association to join me at the podium because we do have a special proclamation for them. I'd like to introduce to you all April Barker and Mary Jaclyn Williams. Can you tell they're sisters? They are representing the Alzheimer's Association this evening, but they also work for Brookdale Senior Living. So, we welcome them here this evening and really appreciate their passionate work for those suffering from Alzheimer's, but also I know they're both in elder care and are very passionate and caring about it. So, I'm going to read this proclamation. It says, "Whereas Alzheimer's disease is a progressive neurodegenerative brain disorder that tragically robs individuals of their memories and leads to progressive mental and physical impairments, and whereas there are no known treatments to prevent, cure, or even delay the onset or slow the progression of Alzheimer's disease, and whereas Alzheimer's disease affects more than 5.7 million Americans of all ages and is the sixth leading cause of death in Tennessee and the fifth leading cause of death among the elderly in the United States, and whereas in Tennessee alone, more than 435,000 family members, friends, and caregivers provided 495 million hours of unpaid care for loved ones with Alzheimer's and spent $279 million on higher healthcare costs, and whereas the city of Gallatin recognizes the efforts of the Alzheimer's Association to highlight early detection and diagnosis of Alzheimer's disease and other dimensions, the education, support, and research, thereby improving the financial, physical, and emotional health of those living with Alzheimer's disease and their caregivers, and whereas the month of June 2018 has been declared Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month to help spread global awareness of the Alzheimer's Association's vision of imagining a world without Alzheimer's disease, and to recognize the individuals, families, and friends and caregivers dealing with this disease and the researchers who are committed to seeking a cure. Now, therefore, I, Paige Brown, Mayor of the City of Gallatin, do hereby proclaim June 2018 as Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month and urge all residents to wear purple to help spread global awareness of the Alzheimer's Association vision of imagining a world without Alzheimer's disease." With that, I'm going to present this to you all. Did you want to say anything?
No.
Okay. Okay. I'm going to get him to take a picture with us.
Thank you. Can I get on either side? I'll get you in the middle.
She's the bossy one.
Symmetrical.
Oh, yeah. Symmetrical.
Hey, Jeff, would you take a close-up of that before you give it to them and then send me both of those pictures where you can actually read the words?
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you so much. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Seriously appreciate the commitment to learning more about the disease and contributing to help find a cure for it and supporting those who are dealing with it and their families. So, thank you all. And now, we'll move on to the regular agenda. And the first item on the agenda is Second Reading on Ordinance 01805-29, and for that, Councilman Alexander is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this is an ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Southern County, Tennessee, rezoning a 6.807 acre parcel from the PGC Plan General Commercial District to the R6 High Density Residential District in approval of preliminary master development plan for blessing the state. Authorizing revision to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflict in ordinance providing for servability and providing for an effective date. And I so move.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Alexander, a second by Councilman Fennell, and that opens the floor for discussion.
Yes, I had one of my constituent, constituent, I'm sorry, he's out of town tonight, and he was very concerned about this development, wanted to know exactly what the apartment's going to look like and who's going to be, you know, living in the apartment. So, when he come back in town, I told him I would show him some pictures of the development, what it's going to look like, but as far as who's going to move in it, I have no idea.
There are no apartments, single-family housing.
Single-family house, I mean, I'm sorry, single-family houses. So, I told him I have no idea who's going to be living in it, but the price is going to be pretty steep, so it won't be just anybody.
I'd say whoever buys them.
Yeah, be pretty nice-looking.
Yeah, they are, they are. But he wasn't against it, but that's what he was concerned about, and I just want to voice his opinion because he's out of town right now and he's not here to say anything. Anything else you want to add?
Any other discussion? Say seeing none, this is Second Reading on Ordinance 01805-29. Will all in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, please say no. It does pass unanimously. Item number two is Second Reading on amended ordinance 01806-30, and I'm going to ask Councilman Fennell to take this one, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance appropriating $329,894.14 for 2008 year-end budget adjustments. And at this time, I would like to make an amendment to amend this ordinance right here, amend it to from $329,894.14 to $370,294.14, and I so move. Second.
We have a motion and a second on the amendment. Any discussion on that? You have the amended as presented on your desk. Okay. Any discussion on the amendment? Okay, all in favor of the amendment, please say aye. Opposed, say no. Does pass unanimously, which takes us to the regular motion, to the original motion, which you technically only made a motion on the amendment. So, do you want to make a motion on the, a motion on?
The original?
Yeah.
So, ordinance appropriating $329,894.14 for 2008.
Well, as amended, you've already amended it, so you can.
For 2018 year-end budget adjustments. I so move.
Okay. Motion by Fennell, second by Hayes. Any discussion on that? All right, this is Second Reading on amended ordinance 01806-30. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, please say no. It does pass unanimously. Item number three is Second Reading on Ordinance 01806-31. Councilwoman Love.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance to amend the City of Gallatin, Tennessee Municipal Code, Chapter 18, Stormwater, to establish a utility for stormwater management, to establish the function of the utility, to create a special revenue fund and method for, of funding for the utility, and to fix the effective date of this ordinance. I so move.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Love, a second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion on this? Okay, seeing no discussion, we will proceed with Second Reading on Ordinance 01806-31. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. It does pass unanimously. Item four is First Reading on Ordinance 01711-95, and Councilman Camp is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Southern County, Tennessee, rezoning two parcels total in pockets, 77.43 acres plus or minus, from the IR Industrial Restrictive, IG Industrial General, R15 Medium Density Residential and R20 Low Density Residential District to 15, R15 Medium Density Residential Plan Residential Development, R15 PRD District in approval of preliminary master development for Langley Estates located east and north of Coles Ferry Road, authorizing revision to be indicated on official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting orders, providing for servability, and providing for effective date. So moved.
We have a motion by Councilman Camp, a second by Councilman Alexander, opening the floor for discussion. Councilwoman Love, you're recognized.
Was there the meeting with Hagueney's that we postponed it for before?
Yeah, there has been no meeting. There's been indication that they do not wish to meet. So, that's why we are. I do, Mr. McCord, do you want to guide us on this a little bit? Because, you know, it was brought up at the Planning Commission last week that there is a changed plan that the.
Yes, this item, Bill McCord, city planner, this item has been kicking around for quite a while now, and it's been deferred a few times, and changes have been made kind of in-stream, and some of the items have maybe come out of order in the traditional sense. But last meeting that we had with the Planning Commission, the applicant did approach the Planning Commission and informally, I would say, offered a modification to the master development plan that you have seen already. And I don't have a lot of details on that plan, but generally, what it would do is take that proportion of the property that's closest to the Hagueney's site, about, I'm guessing about 300 feet from the Hagueney's west property boundary, and reserving that under the existing zoning and using that as a buffer between their proposed development. So, the big change would mean that they would reduce the number of lots, they would retain a buffer that would keep the industrial zoning on the easterly, north easterly, let's call it the north-easterly portion of their property, but they would still move forward with developing the rest of the property, including the northwest portion and, of course, the southerly portion that is subject to annexation as well. Now, the applicant hasn't presented that in a formal setting, neither to the Planning Commission or to certainly City Council, but that is something that has been discussed. And what it would still involve is rezoning some of the property to, that's zoned industrial now, to a residential designation. It would just change the master development plan.
So, are we voting on what's here in this motion, or are we voting on something that's coming up maybe in the future?
You're voting on what's in your agenda package on the original plan that shows the properties being developed closer to the Hagueney's, 176 lots.
Can the representative discuss the proposed plan and then them consider amending it? I don't know if.
What y'all might want to consider, since the applicant does have an alternative plan that you haven't seen yet, is that you might want to have this item come up at the council committee meeting, the next council committee meeting where it can be presented to you and you can discuss it in detail at that time. That's what I would suggest you do.
Well, I mean, I think we're all kind of feeling a little bit bad about, you know, people continually having to come to these meetings because no decision has been made on it. What's the council thinking you guys want to do? Do you want to hear?
I mean, that's, we haven't seen it yet. I mean, that's the whole thing. I mean, a few of y'all had from Planning Commission, but I mean, none of us have seen it yet. So, I think what Bill's, it's a good idea to do that.
I mean, that's a big deal going to 380-foot.
I mean, this is just first reading. It's still going to go through a second reading, but we've got a committee meeting coming up too. And then, you know, it'll be another two, three weeks before the second reading, so.
Do you want to hear from the representative or no?
We can, but I'm just saying it'd be better, it would be better at the committee meeting. That way we can look at it.
So, go ahead and vote on it on first reading.
If that's what, I mean, is that what y'all want to do?
Looking for feedback from.
And that way we'd have more information in the next meeting.
Yeah.
Well, right now, Bill said we'd be voting.
On what's here.
On what's here. But.
Well, it'd be amended, much like you would amend everything.
Yeah, be amended.
And in theory, you, you know, if, you know, if changes weren't made to your, you wouldn't support it on second reading. I mean, we don't do it that much anymore, but we have done that a lot in the past, I think. So.
Do we need to at least pull Andy up, Mr. Lee?
It's up to you all.
I don't think so.
You don't?
Let's just move on with it.
Do you want to move on to a vote on first reading?
Because we'll definitely have more information for the next meeting.
So, we will vote on first reading. Depending on that vote, we will decide on how, whether or not it goes on council committee meeting. Okay, first reading on ordinance 01711-95. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Does pass unanimously on first reading, and I'm assuming this council is then requesting that it go on to next week's council work session to see an amended plan. Sorry, I'm making notes. Next item is item number six, Resolution R1801-1. Councilman Alexander.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution of the City of Gallatin, Southern County, Tennessee, adopting a plan of service upon the annexation of a partial text map 104 partial 093.00, consisting of 80.243 acres, located west of Old Douglas Lane, east of Highway 109, and north of Hidden Trail, which is a private drive, and providing for an effective date. And I so move.
Okay, a motion by Councilman Alexander, a second by Councilman Camp, and that opens the floor for discussion. And you may want some guidance again from Mr. McCord because it's been a while since we have discussed this. For your information, the inner local agreement last night did go to the county commission and it understand that it passed unanimously with no discussion. So, that's the status on that. Any questions? Any discussion? Okay, this will be Resolution R1801-1. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no.
No.
Okay, it passes five to one with Ms. Bradley Love voting no. Item number seven is Resolution R1801-2. Councilman Alexander.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution of the City of Gallatin, Southern County, Tennessee, annexing a 80.243 acre partial, text map 104 partial 093.00, located west of Old Douglas Lane, east of Highway 109, and north of Hidden Trail, which is a private road into the city of Gallatin, authorizing a annex partial to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, authorizing the assignment of annex area to be council district, repealing conflict orders, providing for servability, and providing for an effective date. And I so move.
Okay, motion by Councilman Alexander, second by Councilman Camp. Is there any discussion on this? Seeing no one indicating they wish to discuss, this is Resolution R1801-2. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Again, it passes five to one. Councilwoman Love has voted no. And item number eight is Second Reading on Ordinance 01801-1. Councilman Alexander, it's you again.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an order of the City of Gallatin, Southern County, Tennessee, rezoning an 80.243 acre partial, text map 104, partial 093.00, from the Agricultural Residential District to the MRR, Multiple Residential and Office District, in approval of preliminary master development plan for the Langford Farm, authorizing the revision to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflict orders, providing for servability, and providing for an effective date. And I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Alexander, second by Vice Mayor Overton. Again, the floor is open for discussion. So, the last item on Langford Farms.
I just wanted to say again that after seeing those pictures of the flooding and knowing that road myself, knowing the bridge and how small of a road that is, I just, I feel like that's too many houses to be added over that way.
Anyone else wishing to comment? Okay, this is Second Reading on Ordinance 01801-1. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say no.
No.
And Councilwoman Love voted against, the other five in favor. Item nine is Resolution R1806-41. Vice Mayor Overton.
Yes, ma'am. This is a resolution to revise employee pay plans for the 1% pay raise, so I so move.
That's hard to say, isn't it?
It is.
Employee, it's hard. It's so, you try and say it, it's so hard to say.
Employee pay plans.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Overton, second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion? Okay, this is Resolution R1806-41. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no.
Is that for the pay plan or the pay too?
Yes, we need, we need clarification. It is for the pay plan. And it passed unanimously. Item 10 is Resolution R1806-42. Councilman Fennell.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution amending Gallatin personnel rules and regulations relating to training, personal protective equipment and certification and license reimbursement. I so move. Second.
Motion by Councilman Fennell, second by Vice Mayor Overton, and for the general public's information, this is where in public safety where we, you know, train or spend money on an employee either to. money on an employee, either to increase their responsibilities or to onboard them, and then they leave within a short period of time, we ask for reimbursement on that. And it's changing the time that we're giving those people to actually reimburse the city for the money that we've spent on training and equipping them. So, any further discussion on this resolution? Okay, it's Resolution R18, oh, I'm sorry.
I was just going to ask, I know that Eddie asked for a list of all those, and I thought that we were all going to get a list of... Is it? Oh, okay, I, that's all right, you can email it. I just had kind of thought it was for all of us.
Debbie Johnson, Human Resources.
Would you mind distributing it via email tomorrow?
Yes, I'll be glad to.
Thank you. Anything else?
We did get Chief Bandys, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, this is Resolution R1806-42. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say no. Does pass unanimously. Item number 11, Resolution R1806-43, and Vice Mayor Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution adopting a strategic plan for the City of Gallatin that we've been working on for a long time, and I so move.
I appreciate that. You seem to say that was a pleasure, Vice Mayor Overton, who made the motion, seconded by Councilwoman Love, also seemed to be with pleasure. I do think this is a very exciting opportunity for our city. For this council's information, this has been on the website for the public's review to let them know that we are voting on it tonight, just to let them know it's out there.
Mayor, I just want to say, I hope everybody will get involved and, you know, make this thing what it's meant to be. It's going to take everybody. One or two people can't do it, so I just hope everybody will get involved.
Yeah, and it's challenging. I mean, I'm really, really excited about year one, year two. I'm a little intimidated by, but I think it will challenge us all to do better, so it's a very exciting time, I think. Any other discussion? Questions? I like wanting drums or something to vote on this, but this is Resolution R1806-43. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. It does pass unanimously. I want to say a huge thanks to the Greater Nashville Regional Council, Michael Skipper and Kim Maltembo. They've been our, our guides and our champions and our cheerleaders through all of this, and we're very appreciative of the work that we've done, they've done on our behalf. And I think we're all looking forward to moving on to updating our land use plan, and certainly in that, we're going to need the public's engagement too.
Kim, you can go to California now and run 100 miles tomorrow.
But I am very grateful for the help, and certainly the help of the stakeholders who participate in those meetings, and most importantly, our council and our department heads, because our department heads engaged and worked hard, and this council did too. And I know it's been painful at times and difficult, and it's taken a lot of time, some of you, it's taken time away from your work, but I hope, you know, in years from now, we'll be able to look back and say, man, that was so worth it. It really made a difference in how we ran our city, and it's, and the city's better because of it. So, thank you all, and I'll quit talking about the strategic plan for a few minutes. That actually does conclude our regular agenda, and it brings us now to other business, and I know that Ms. Kitchell has an item for us.
Yes, Mayor, I have a certificate of compliance. This is for the copper, steel, wine, and spirits located at 1176 Long Hallup Pike. Everything is in order. They just have to do this every two years.
Motion to approve by Vice Mayor Overton, a second by Councilwoman Love. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say no. It passes unanimously. Any other items, any other, any other items, any other items of business from this council? That's what I'm trying to say.
Reminding everybody who would be available this coming Sunday, I'll be celebrating my 50th anniversary in Norville, would be carrying two buses from St. Luke Church going that way, so if anybody would like to ride down, we'd be glad to have you.
Well, congratulations, Councilman Alexander, Brother Alexander. What are they calling your church? Pastor, brother?
I've been called a lot of things in 20 years, so.
Something we can't talk about.
Right.
What's your favorite when it comes to preaching? Pastor.
I don't give reverence to nobody according to the Bible.
Congratulations, Pastor Alexander. We appreciate your service in that capacity as well. And now, I do have one other item. This is on your desk. This is the, this has been intent to execute a professional services contract with Reagan Smith for the various sidewalks project. And so, with your vote and permission, we will do that? Without it, we won't?
No.
Yeah?
You need a motion?
Don't we vote on those, you should?
No objection, did you find, right?
Without objection? No objection? All right, we will do that. Any other other business this evening? We will move along to public recognition on non-agenda-related items. At this time, if you have something that's not on the agenda, but it's on your mind, it's your opportunity to come forward and talk about it. Again, introduce yourself and give us your address. Oh, he's going to take a second opportunity.
I gotta get up here, Miss, my sweetheart, she's too short. I'm Joe Board, and I live at 10007 Hart Street. And the reason why I come to this podium the second time tonight is because I want to get the feel of what's going on with the council with regard to a endowment for the cemetery. Do you have an endowment for the cemetery, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Why don't you have one?
You have to have money to have an endowment.
Okay, well, if somebody want to give you some, would you set up an endowment?
Uh, well, I mean, it takes some sizable amount of funds to be able to do that.
But it makes no ever mind. $5 or $10, you still have it, kitty.
Well, but we're kind of using that money to address immediate concerns.
I understand about what you mean.
We are taking donations to support the cemetery, and we will continue to do so.
Well, I look forward to next meeting like this to make a donation for the endowment of the cemetery. Will you accept that endowment?
Okay, we will accept the donation.
Okay, well, we're going to tie it up, because what we're going to do is we're going to use the interest off that to help maintain the cemetery, and then that starts in the perpetual motion to where other people can give, give in lieu of flowers or whatever, so that we'll have something there to take care of the cemetery with. Now, would that work?
Have to find out about the city being able to set up an endowment.
Well, they can handle it.
We'll see.
We'll see. All right, we'll see, we'll see in two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak under public recognition on non-agenda-related items? Seeing no one, that brings us to the opportunity to say adieu.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Vice Mayor Overton, second by Councilman Alexander. All in favor, say aye. Everyone have a lovely evening. Thank you for being here. We look forward to seeing you again next time.